Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Mid-11th Avenue, 4th floor Downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bydlman?
Lord, as we come to you this morning, we thank you for all things. We thank you for the Commissioners and their staff and we thank you for a country where we're free and our heart goes out to Pakistan and all the young children that lost their lives and we just pray for our world and for safety and protection and freedom and we just believe you also that Lorraine County will grow and be productive and that's our prayer and that we'll have the unity to work together to make that happen, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Beth. Good morning, welcome Lorraine County Board of Commissioners to December 17th, 2014 meeting. Commissioner Williams, your dog?
Jim, go ahead.
Good morning, this is kennel 34. He is a Beagle Shepherd mix, was found in Sheffield Township, available on Saturday the 20th. We have 26 other dogs in the kennel, so come on down, take a look, thank you.
Inexpensive Christmas presents, make you happy for a long time.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Right.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you want to ask Mr. Cordez about the advances?
I was going to talk about that when we got into the budget issue.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travels.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner, I do have a number of personnel issues I'd like to discuss with the Board, potential hiring, Golden Acres, maybe discussion of solid waste maintenance, job family services, also update on ongoing litigation, potential purchase and sale of real estate. This is also last meeting, if I can think of anything else that we may need to deal with before we close down, I'll modify under my business. So I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session to discuss those allies, those issues I have outlined, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of November 25th and December 10th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Appoint Tim Moore as Lorraine County's Appraiser Inspector for the year 2015. The total annual appropriation is $3,400 with mileage reimbursement of 52 cents per mile.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize County Administrator to provide and execute all necessary documents effective December 18th, 2014 through December 31st, 2014, for the year-end closed activity, including but not limited to transfers, advances, repayments, appropriations, requisitions, travel, bills, payroll, related transaction and payments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approving a housekeeping resolution relating to wage increases for all non-bargaining employees identical to wage increases in United State Workers Local 8845 Agreement for employees to include E-901, JFS, Dog Kennel, Bridge, Golden Acres and all other departments under the jurisdiction of the Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in contract with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the County Vision Services effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018 with 90-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners? Yes.
With the next couple of issues with these contracts, I want to make sure that the resolution also includes that I need some clarification, the contract, Jerry worked on them pretty quickly for me, but I still need some changes to them, so.
Approval with tentative.
With approval by the Prosecutor's Office after the changes are made. This way I don't have to stop for four weeks here and wait on the next Board meeting to get something done.
Okay.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in contract with Benefit Management Services Agreement, E-Vision, for RX Services effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018 with 90-day cancellation clause.
With the same requirements as the last one, for Jim and the County Prosecutors, I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in Business Associate Agreement with Envision Pharmaceutical Services LLC for prescription medication and supplies effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018 with 90-day cancellation clause and approval of Prosecutor's Office.
Mr. Cordez, 15 needs the same caveat?
I would put them in all, I.
Including the doubt.
One or two of them have been changed already, but I wasn't, I didn't track it real close yesterday, so just that flexibility would be appreciated.
Again, as, humble.
Second.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in contract with Delta Dental for County Dental Services effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018 with 90-day cancellation clause and approval of County Prosecutor's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve the 2015 Special Revenue Annual Appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve the 2015 General Fund Budget.
I will move and I'm assuming we'll have discussion.
Temporary.
It's temporary, correct, it's a temporary budget.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, we've been working on this for about a month or so and getting our final numbers. In respect to discussions with the County Administrator, we have pulled back all advances that most of the advances County has back to raise our carryover.
We, here's where we stand, Commissioner, we had a lot of outstanding encumbrances that needed to be swept and looked at, when I say swept, it means that were they still really encumbered funds, sometimes you get a lot of encumbrances and you don't cancel the encumbrances when it comes in less than it was expected to and so we were doing that and we've been going through all the advances. Now, one of the reasons that I put all those pullback on the advances into your Board business was that I want to make sure our carryover looks strong because we're going to do borrowing next year. It's just an accounting move to shore up what we look like at the end of the year, but those advances are going to go right back out in the first quarter next year. The rating agencies, you know, they look at the end of the year carryover and I spend an inordinate amount of time trying to show them that they're actually the stronger carryover based upon all these advances outs to the various programs and people are going to go, what programs are those, well it's CDBG, could be workforce development, we've done advances to Children and Family First, whoever really needs money for grants, because most of the grants now are, how do I explain it, a do and get, you have to complete all the requirements and then you have to submit and do a draw on the funds and so they need operating capital throughout that and it's getting worse as we know with Children and Family First, it may be six months before they can do a draw on their funds, we can't shut down for six months, they want us to do the work and then they want us to draw on the funds and this is some maneuvering that's going on at the state with regard to how they're allocating those funds, so it makes it more challenging for us at the local level. I did not want to have to explain to Moody's why our carryover was going to look a little bit less than it did last year, so that's why the accounting maneuvering with the advances. I just don't want you to think that you have real cash there.
Right, so are we looking with all those advances pulled back at the 8.3 million carryover with those advances?
Restoring, sales tax is going to come in, it's not out there yet, so it could come in a little bit higher than that.
I think it's going to come in a little higher and I also talked to Ms. Rollo over at the Domestic Relations, I think they're going to be returning more cash than they anticipated from Domestic Relations, so I was happy to hear that, we're talking about some projects for next year, but it was, I always know I'm in trouble when somebody says I have good news and they say but.
But.
That cancels out.
I see Jody's here today, so.
Thank you, Jody, nice job on the budget through the year.
Yeah, it was really good, we've always had the ability to work with domestics on the budget issue, so we're going to meet and talk about a project over at the Justice Center in January, so that give me a little bit more comfort factor that I think we'll get to at least the carryover, hopefully the carryover number that we had last year, but recognizing that it's part of the float that we used to fund programming.
Well, we've worked together on budget and based on the numbers that came in, we do pass a temporary every year since you've been here, Commissioner, and prior to you being here, was a temporary going forward. The Budget Commission is always quite conservative in their estimates in what our revenue's going to be, but I had prepared in the center round, Commissioner Williams, you had this about a week and a half ago, because you asked for anything updated, there had been no real changes to it except for, since the decision was made to move probation to Middle Avenue, taking out the dollars there and the $50,000 they wanted for building maintenance because we're attending to the maintenance issues, I spoke with Karen this morning, actually the jury commissioners room, they've got a walk-through today with potential bidders and also the veterans, since we're working on a building and it's not the veterans' responsibility for housing that falls back to the Commissioners, we took that out of the budget. So that puts us moving forward at about a $58,276,454 budget for next year, but just doing it as a temporary to cover salary accounts through the first quarter and then we will appropriate thereafter, we'll be receiving our tax receipts when the taxes go out in February, so then we can get a closer look at it and as we've always said, the county budget is a living document and we adjust it up or down based on the amount of receipts we have.
And based on that, the one day I sent to you, I went through, I looked at the expenditures for this year, Lisa did a good job getting that to me, added 3%, 5% and depending on which department like EMA was a little higher, so pretty much everyone is getting the numbers they want or at least getting more than what they asked for or what they spent last year. And based on that, it comes under what the actual, by $2,000, what the projected revenue income is for 2015, I would state that we should submit a budget that is within our actual budget set by the Budget Commission and knowing that if the additional revenue does come in, you can increase it next year.
The concern with that, Tom, no offense, I mean, I took all the numbers you set and went through them yesterday, taking line number 17, Public Assistance, that's our mandated share to ODJFS, your original figures I think were cut at 20%, 15%, now you're at 14%, that would then.
Well, it's not a cut, that's an increase.
Well, still, but we have a mandated share they give us under revised code, we make the mandated share.
Right, but for the years, you're just over a million dollars for the last two years.
I understand that.
So, I mean, to go through and do a budget of it at $1.2 million when you're spending under 1, under a million 20,000, I think adding 20% onto it is a little much.
Well, I think that's our safety net though, in case we have any changes on, that's how we've always done in the past. I did see you adjusted though, because originally on the budget you said over you were cutting the jail allocation.
Well, I look at the, right, there's a, you have two Commissioners and I end up duplicating that, that's why I sent you the updated one, and they're getting the 4.125 million that they requested.
Yeah, I see that on there.
But you have line 10 and 11 blacked out and 24, 25.
10 and 11, it's not blacked out, it came out blacked out in yours, it was actually in red, it's just showing that the, under leases, those are combined and for the total combined for the community development, we spent like $600 and some thousand total with the expenditure and I'll have to look at it, but there's also.
But we're also short staffed employees and we're going to introduce our new Economic Development Director this morning, you've got to remember, some of these numbers, Tom, are based on people we haven't recaptured, that we've got to recapture, that we've been holding off and holding off and also when you look at expenditures, but like workforce development, you want to take a 5% increase to what they expended this year, where we budgeted the request of $309,000, that's 100% reimbursable, so whatever goes out comes back in, it's not truly an expenditure of the general fund, it's a budget line item.
Again, I'm just looking at going through and having the expenditures match, if you want to increase that number, I'm fine with increasing that number, but I think you should decrease.
Well, I'm actually happy with the one I sent out to work with, so I think I'm happy with this as a temporary budget, like I said, as we go into next year, we'll adjust up and down based on the revenues coming in, so.
What was our actual revenue for this year, do you have that?
Final numbers, somewhere around 59.
I think we're going to be just under 50 million.
Just under 50 million?
Plus carryover.
That was with the.
Carryover. That's carryover end?
No.
No.
It's just revenue.
That's just revenue, 50 million, so, right, so the Budget Commission is giving us 47.9, so almost 48.
That's for next year.
Right, for next year, and if we got 50 million this year, chances are we're at least going to get 50 million, so they're $2 million lower than what we're actually probably going to get, because they are conservative, which is fine, but I don't want to go and devastate, you know, county government because they're conservative.
I don't think you're devastating county government, what, like you said, it's a temporary budget, so you're going through.
But with you, what you're proposing, we'd actually have to make the cuts now.
No, it's actually an increase on what they spent.
You're talking about the actual expenditures, and when you go into office services and cutting those are some things we go doing forward.
I mean, the thing that you always, there's always been a built-in carryover into the budget, that's how you get your $7.6 million, it's built in.
Right.
So all I'm doing for the budget in order to show that it's a true budget is going through and giving like a 3% to 5% increase of what the actual expenditures were. If in June you decide that, hey, we want to go through and we want to do a software upgrade and it's going to cost $200,000 or a phone system, well you will have a better indication of how much revenue you have coming in and then you can adjust the budget that way.
Well, let me go back again, Tom, take your line item number 43, the sheriff, you went off of his expenditures issue and then you gave him a 3% increase, well, what are we taking into account, the $99,000 in the cops grant deputies that we have to carry based on, we approved the grant three years ago, we got $99,000 there, we have $400,000 in regards to the courtroom security for PSI and adult probation, plus a couple of the requests he had within there, his 5.618 budget, you got him at 5.462. I know you're talking about the expenditures they had this year, but that doesn't encompass everything that's required for next year.
Well, a lot of that.
In regards to the additional.
Well, with the sheriff, a lot of that was already in the budget, he went up over it, those expenses have already been paid.
No, you weren't here for the one, were you here for his presentation before when they made the mistake for a million dollars, they thought they needed a million one, we went back and readjusted it.
Well, what I'm looking at.
Because he did a double.
Yeah, no, I was here when he did it.
Okay.
Their budget was 4.91 million for this year, they spent 5.3 million.
Correct.
So they do have expenditures in there and again, it's, you have a limited amount of money that's going to go through, I'm going to stand by where it's nice that everybody wants more money and they can go through and provide more services, but you have to kind of restrict the spending as well, too.
Well, I think we've done a good job of that over the years, the county's been holding its own, I mean, it'd be nice to do better and have more staff and accomplishment, we haven't been able to do that, but we've been able to provide the basic services and again with the operations of the county that we don't have a lot of significant control over.
Well, and there's things in here I don't know if you're going to tackle on, I mean, you're looking at, you do have the veteran services, they're looking at a building, huge investment on there.
Correct, but that's not a cash out, that'll be a bonded.
That's going to be a bonded, so you're going to be looking about, you know, $100,000 on there, afford a bond, and then you're going to be looking at a new phone system, which is probably going to be bonded out, another 75 to 100,000, and then if you go through and you do additional capital improvements on there, if you want to go through.
The traditional software?
Software, all that stuff, that's not included in here in your budget, which is going to increase that a dollar amount, so that's why I said I would rather have a lower budget and then if those items do come up and you do need to purchase them, you have the money.
I think we've done a good job, I'm willing to reaffirm the motion, approve the 2015 budget for $58,276,454.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Approve the agreement for the provision of limited professional services for Barbara Hoffmann, Inc., Cleveland, an amount of 5,000 plus allowances of 5,000 for sample extraction and evaluation from Lorraine County Justice Center, investigation of the 4th floor west exterior wall area, water infiltration in 3rd floor south wall near mediation department paid from the capital improvement professional services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, would you please?
I will.
This is added on.
And in fact, I met with Council yesterday to discuss this once again, we have been chasing defects in this building since 2005, we were in litigation with the masonry company that built the curtain wall on the Justice Center, unfortunately that company went out of business, we've tried to chase the bonding agent, we're back, excuse me, we're back doing that again, so I would say we're beginning a pre-litigation again to try to get some return funds for the defects that were in the building when we took possession of it. This is part of that, this is another defect, we've been looking for this water leak, this elusive water leak for a number of years, I thought that we had these things taken care of, but this one has been problematic and this is the one that Administrator Louie was talking about, that I had, up until that point, hadn't heard much about and thought it had been resolved. We can't resolve this ourselves, I once again need Barbara Hoffmann to come in, go through, do testing, water may seem very simple, but where it comes in and where it ends up is very challenging, and this one's even more so because it depends on the direction of the rain, the wind, and we'll go for a long time without a problem and then boom, we have problems. They believe it has to do with work behind the curtain wall that wasn't, the brick curtain wall that wasn't done correctly, I hope we don't have to do any more destructive testing, this is just a start of it, there's a little bit of destructive testing here, but not a lot, if you remember when we did this about six years ago, we actually cut holes in the building and went in and did inspections and that caused a lot of work to be done. When you say what a lot of work was, it was $800,000 worth of defect work that had to be done. Now, because of some timing in the litigation and the company going out of business, we believe the only claim we can press without covering this that's being done right now would be about 530,000 of that, we're going to continue to press that claim with the bonding company, but clearly that'll be risk managed, there'll be some settlement on that, there's, you know, there's some potentiality for a negotiated outcome on that, but we're going to continue to have to do this type of work until we find all these defects and I'm going to tell you, this is just to give us an idea of what we need to do, this is not to pay.
This is not to fix.
To fix, but it's got to be done, and I want to, and the reason it's on the agenda today is because I don't want to wait another four weeks or five weeks, I want to get them engaged now and get this, try to get this matter to a point where I can talk to you in January about possibly what a solution's going to cost, or at least a proposed solution. Remember, we thought we fixed this once.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Calo?
No.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Under Children and Families, Amendment Resolution 14454 adopted July 9th, 2014, approving Help Me Grow Contract with Lorraine County Developmental Disabilities, said amendment is to reflect an increase from $60,000.67 to $115,757.33 and extend the contract through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Community Development, approve an enter in agreement with Lorraine Metropolitan Housing Authority in the amount of $16,500 for tenant-based rental assistance using, I don't know, PY14 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program Grant Fund, this will provide rental assistance to a minimum of 21 low moderate income households countywide, excluding the cities of Alariah, Lorraine and North Ragaville, and will be paid from the contract services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Award contract to CT Consultants, Manner, in the amount of $202,400 to provide professional services to administer and implement 2014 CHIP grant, Lorraine County and its partners for ruling in Chapel Lake were awarded $1,150,000 for fiscal year 14, $121,400 will be used for implementation of private owner rehab and repairs and $67,000 administration coordination of activities and $14,000 for soft costs with three units to be paid from the contract services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in agreement with Donald B. Eager and Associates LLC land count through the amount of $10,000 as provider of fair housing services and compliance with CDBG program year 14 to be paid from the contract services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize various personnel to utilize the various credit cards not to exceed 4,000, said usage is for work-related expense, food, transportation, gas and oil, motor vehicle repair, maintenance, conference, telephone and lodging.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Childcare Resource Center Lorraine in the amount of $37,454 to provide certification training for type B child daycare providers for fiscal year 15, this is effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015, and authorize director to execute amendment for changes in program and content or increase on behalf of Board of Prosecutors, approved as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with El Centro Services, Inc., Lorraine, in the amount of eight hundred to provide Spanish consultant services for fiscal year fifteen, effective January first, two thousand and fifteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and authorize director to execute amendment for changes in program and content or increase on behalf of Board of Prosecutors' approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve and enter in contract with Greenwave Computer Recycling LLC, Indiana, for operation of three scrap collection, I think this should be e-scrap collection recycling program for two thousand and fifteen. Four RFPs were received, this being the most complying with specifications, and will result in substantial savings instead of costing fifty thousand dollars annually. District will realize income of over ten thousand annually to be paid from the e-scrap recycling fund account.
Mr. Bailey?
This is evolving industry like I've told you for many years, and my thirty-some years in this business, I've watched electronics turn a hundred and eighty degrees, and now it's becoming a cash asset to us. So we may not even be in the business in ten, fifteen years. There may be enough private sector folks that squeeze us out. So that's a good thing, all right? And we're going to try this and see how it works with Greenwave. There's been another company that's popped up on the horizon. It's called Columbus Drop Off. It's also paying for all electronic parts coming in their facility. So this is a chance to make a little money instead of spending money.
The resolution says income of ten thousand to be paid from.
Paid to?
Well, it can't be paid from if we're going to make money, so I think that we need to change that resolution, right? And I want that to go into that account, that revenue account that we established over in solid waste pursuant to the Attorney General opinion that says funds generated from activity of the solid waste district do not have to be reincorporated into restricted funds, so.
No, this is just, I mean, that probably should have been a period, but it's just ten thousand annually, and this will be paid from the e-scrap account.
But we're not being, we're getting money back. We're not paying out.
We're receiving, not paying.
Yeah, we have to pay for the contract.
Well, I think you have two mixed issues here.
Right. One is the approval of the contract with the company.
Right. That's what we're seeking, all right?
Right.
And they will pay us for certain items in the electronics scrap stream.
Where we can get.
We're not paying a contract. We're not paying them for a contract.
Previously, we paid eight cents a pound, all right?
Well, it says instead of substantial state, instead of costing us fifty thousand annually, the district will realize income over ten thousand, so.
Period.
To be deposited into whatever account, right?
Understanding we're changing vendors.
Yes.
The new vendor is going to pay us for our e-scrap.
Yes.
Versus us paying somebody to haul it away.
Yes.
So this contract with Greenwave is to approve the contract with them to handle our e-scrap.
Right, and make payment to us up into ten thousand dollars a year, all right?
That, period. That's the end of the resolution, as all needs to say, to enact the contract.
I would agree with that. You can't go from paying fifty thousand to making ten thousand and still be paying somebody though.
Correct. I agree. It should be period.
Okay.
We've only got forty things on here, so.
You said that we had to pay for a contract?
No.
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 No, but it should have been period.
Period, and that's it. If we can stop it there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have that adjustment now?
Yeah.
Thank you. I will move.
Second is amended.
Anything further? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the MOU with OSU Office for the year two thousand and fifteen for compost education now to exceed seventeen thousand, four hundred, and will be paid in two payments, May and November, each in the amount of eighty-seven hundred from the solid waste allocation account, and contains a thirty-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion here. This is in regards to our OSU extension. I've had dialogue back and forth with Judge Walter in regards to the Green Acres money. After a couple of things he had to take out of it, do we ever get a final number back from Judge Walter?
I think he's still waiting to find out about the grant that somebody's.
There aren't any. I spoke with Minnie Taylor, and she was going to call Judge Walter to figure him out. I also threw the budget process through what we had there, allocated up to forty thousand dollars if needed out of the general fund to make OSU extension. The hundred and three thousand, six hundred dollars total, so we qualify for a four-H program also. Judge Walter's, you'll call him today and get that finished up, so he can get that part done, because we have to do a call with him, so. This ties into what the Lorraine County Solid Waste pays for services provided by OSU extension, which now will make our hundred and three thousand and change match, which means Lorraine County will still be able to have a four-H program next year also. I knew, Mr. Bailey, if you'd like to talk about it anymore.
No.
No, I'll second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the various MOUs with the Health Departments for the year two thousand and fifteen to be paid from the solid waste allocation account. County General Health District pay in the amount of fifty thousand, who pay in five payments of ten thousand each for the months of July through November. Alariah City Health Department pay in the amount of sixty thousand, who pay in twelve months at five thousand dollars each per month, and Lorraine City Health Department in the amount of sixty thousand, who pay twelve months and five thousand dollars each per month.
Any comments on this, Mr. Bailey?
No.
Did that go up? Wasn't it fifty before?
No.
No, it's always been sixty thousand?
Two cities more money we've given the county.
Always have. The Health Department says they don't need it, so that's the reason they're less.
The city of Alariah City Health Department's really going to be needing it since they got cut so drastically, or going to be cut so drastically.
And then Lorraine's movement also, I saw in the paper about hiring Kathy Boylan to be their director for another director, so. I will move.
Lot of changes. Second.
Anything further, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
With regard to those changes, if I may for a second, now with Keith, you brought up the Health Department. These changes are a digression, not a progression.
Right.
Okay, I want to point that out because we got very, very close in conversation about a year or two ago to having one Health Department representing the whole county. That still needs to occur in Lorraine County with Lorraine, and I'm not privy to why they're moving in that direction. I'm sure they're thinking they're doing the best thing there. But we need to encourage people to re-engage in those conversations about a one health district community rather than a three health district community.
Actually, Theresa and I were having that discussion about eight o'clock this morning.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't say that here when we have the opportunity to say that. The time may be even riper now for these conversations with the stress that we're seeing in the Alariah city budget, and they're doing things that we've done now for a number of years, and they're not nice things to do. Lorraine is still struggling a bit themselves up there, so we may very well want to try to contact them and provide a little bit of insight and leadership to suggest that we should have those conversations again. But going and separating is not the answer. Combining is the answer.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Anything further, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the engineer, except on behalf of Eden Township, the improvements and maintenance bond in Mallards Edge subdivision two, concrete pavement, sanitary sewers, and storm sewers were installed in two thousand and fourteen, and inspection fees have been paid. The plat is recorded in Record of Plats, volume one hundred, page thirty-six, Legends Way with road number T three sixteen, commencing west and then north of Legends Way Phase One, four hundred and eighty point thirteen feet, or zero point zero nine one miles in length, ending at a future development point to the north.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter an LPA agreement with ODOT to administer the design qualification of bidders, construction, and inspection of the project, and establish responsibilities for local administration of the project for repair and resurfacing of Lake Avenue from Gersbrough Wall to Alariah Avenue to Alariah Township, and will be paid by federal funding assistance. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors' approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter consent legislation with ODOT to perform bridge replacements of structures located on Parsons Road Township Road fifteen, over Black River, Carlisle Township, and Snell Road Township Road twelve, over Baker Creek, Columbia Township. Both bridges are currently scheduled to be constructed in two thousand and fifteen. No funds are required by the county, and the county engineer agrees to assume and bear one hundred percent of total cost for added construction items required by the county and that necessary for improvements as determined by the state and federal highway administration.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorize sheriff to utilize the Visa credit card now to exceed thirty-five hundred for conferences, food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas, and oil, or vehicle maintenance and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles, and the payment of internet services using criminal investigation in accordance with the highway regulations for three oh one point two seven.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter in agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., in the amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to engage Tyler to license CERN software and provide CERN professional services relating to the sheriff's civil office for soft code to be paid from the nine-one-one bonds fund account.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Cordez?
Yeah, this has been a slug, hasn't it?
Yes, it has. Long time coming.
Well, you remember, this started out at like a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and you said to go out and squeeze somebody's head, so we did. But the squeeze wasn't quite that easy. It was taken about eight or nine months.
Right.
I can tell you that there's no more water to wring out of the chamois. This is about as low as it's going to go, and they also offered us terms and conditions on the payments, and not that we really needed that, but they kept insensitized in the package any way they could on their end. As a point of explanation, the civil office oversees quite a few things that interlace with nine-one-one. We consolidated the records department. We consolidated dispatching. We've saved millions of dollars for the general fund and have developed a cooperative working relationship with the sheriff that didn't exist just a mere few years ago. I would suggest that things are working very, very well. I have no complaints from them, and anytime that something comes up, we work right through the issue. So it does prove that you can jointly administer these things and still make a successful outcome. That said, now the civil office software is a patchwork of different programs over the years that they've put together to save money and try to get the job done. But it's not going to work well with all the new software and all the work we're doing at nine-one-one with New World. It needs to be upgraded. It needs to be brought in line with what we're going to be doing at nine-one-one so that the records and the warrants and everything that we have working continue to seamlessly happen. The sheriff doesn't have this money in his budget. We talked about this early in the year a couple of times, and the board demonstrated a bit of a willingness to support this if we could get the cost down. One of the things I, you know, I just want to put out is remember, they were warrants. Remember, we put the drive-up door. Used to be they would drive up even out of the jail. They would get out of the car, go in, get the warrant. You know, you know the way, it's a little bit of waste of time. Everybody has a little bit of that fluffy time, and we got that down, and now they radio in, they drive up to nine-one-one. We put the door out. They get the warrant. They drive off. They really didn't like it at first. Now they love it, especially now when the weather gets cold. They don't have to get out of the car or go inside. It's those little efficiencies, those little practices that we're working together on to more fully utilize time and resources. This will make them much more efficient. We'll be able to utilize these resources and get more results by doing this, so I would encourage you to support this contract.
Commissioners, this is another one. I did have a few language tweaks, so.
In fact, I had that caveat again with prosecutor's approval. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
You thought you were done.
No.
We've got more coming.
Oh, boy.
It was a pretty robust agenda that we had here, but we're trying to close the year out, and I got a few more that came in late. Wasn't able to make it to the agenda.
Will they come in at midnight?
It seemed like it last night. I need to get an approval on the one-stop MOU. This is more housekeeping. The MOU just allocates costs through the various departments. There's a dozen or so departments over there that share the cost of the space, and this just puts out the prop allocation. I think it was Volk Rehab had a couple more people come into the space, so we have to realot where the funding is for that space.
There was no changes to the actual contract. It was just.
Right. The contract language is pretty basic, and this doesn't cost us anything. Actually, we receive revenue for the space, but it has, in accordance with the prevailing guidance in this, it has to be allocated based upon utilization and the number of people actually being in the space.
Amend resolution thirteen, four sixty, adopt in May eighth, two thousand and thirteen, approving and entering MOUs with various network partners to identify and coordinate a variety of workforce development resources, and the total contract amount is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, effective July first, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirty, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. I have a contract here from Paladin to redo our biometrics hand reader. Actually, what I'm proposing, this is another one we've been working on for a while, is to put hand readers on each floor rather than just on the first floor. The one downstairs is not doing well. It's quite old. It's temperamental at best. I met with the Director of Children's Services, and I will tell you, we do meet on a regular basis, and I wasn't aware that they were having some issues because they do work in the evening. They do have children and families come here to have the foster care parents in. A lot of times, they need to get into the third floor. They can control the children that they're charged with a lot better than going down through the first floor, trying to go up the stairs, the elevators, and he's asked that we take a look at that. They've offered to contribute some of the funding. I don't know how much. I'll work that out with them, but this would also provide better access for the employees that are here in the evening. We started locking the doors again much earlier. We don't have the distant learning going on right now. It needs to be upgraded. It's, we'll put that on the capital improvements notes that we have right now that we're going to roll into bonds later on.
Madam Clerk?
Please, no resolution?
No, that's okay. Approve and enter in contract with Paladin in Valley View, Valley View, in the amount.
What's the amount?
Just make sure. It says twenty, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents for installation of the biometric fingerprint readers and per watch access control panel at the administration building.
Second, that was very good.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
All right, here's a big one. Boeing and Associates, you've seen all the renderings for the train station, all the work that's going to be done. We were going to do a presentation here. We haven't gotten to that, so we're going to do it in January sometime. I can't wait to unveil the renderings of the potential project over at that center. I still have not nailed down the contract with Amtrak, but it's gotten better. They finally have some money on the table rather than taking everything's free. There's still a lot of work to do there, though, to more fully mature what the relationship will be going forward. So we've been losing time the last couple of months. We really haven't accomplished anything. We've had that stuff for about two, two and a half months, and I'm really tired of waiting on one thing to occur to progress the project. We have the money to go ahead with this firm and begin doing the hard documents that'll be necessary to bid. And I want them engaged now. I don't want to wait and try to do it in the middle of January and then try to get them going at the end of January. Here's my urgency, and this is why I've been frustrated with Norfolk Southern first and then with Amtrak second. We're going to lose money at the end of June again, a lot of money if we don't spend it.
This is, these are federal funds that have been awarded for this project. It's not general fund money.
Right, exactly, Commissioner. And I thought that we'd be doing this work, or at least have these contracts, three months ago. But because we haven't been able to reach agreement on several minor issues that can be resolved, I believe they'll be resolved, we haven't moved forward. Even if they're not resolved and the project doesn't see light of day now, all of this engineering work needs to be done. That work isn't going to change. This is not something that's going to expire on the shelf. This must be done at some future date. If funding doesn't become available for the rest of this project, these documents, all this stuff will be able to be used in the future. I'm confident that eventually there's going to be funding for this project. We've lined up quite a bit of funding already. I will tell you, I don't have all the funding lined up, but I'm encouraged that we can get there. But if I lose this funding right now at the end of June, and ODOT's already talking about reallocating our dollars down in Columbus. If I don't demonstrate to them on your behalf that we're doing something, then this is going to die on the vine. I have to have this to get the rest.
We've said to get it going forward. I mean, this has been a hot topic in our five-county region. I spoke with Grace Goldschmidt. She's always trying to keep tabs on how it's going. I keep keeping her informed, and we have to do this.
We do, and the last piece is I haven't really fully negotiated the cost in this contract, so I would like it to be open. I got a maximum in there, but I want to do a lot better on the cost, so I gave you the maximum, but I believe I'm going to drive that cost down.
Not to exceed.
I want it not to exceed.
Can you please change that if it's not there?
It is not to exceed.
We'll get federal funds for it, but when the project's done, it's still going to be, the maintenance is going to be on account.
It could be.
And it doesn't look like Amtrak's going to change their timing for routes coming in here, so we're not really going to see any type of increase in passenger.
Well, unless Alariah becomes a destination someday, which quite frankly, we're a stop to destinations. Lots of nice little places along the route are stops to other destinations, so that's not a bad thing. We just happen to be a late, late-morning destination stop. As far as the maintenance go, I will tell you that I've already negotiated well over ten thousand with Amtrak, and my number's higher. I don't know how high we can drive this, but I intend on having as little of the burden on us here for our co-use of that facility.
Yeah, the elevator maintenance, it's going to be higher than a ten thousand.
It may be, Commissioner. I can't tell you right now. I may be able to opt them onto the current county contracts, which would drive down some of those costs. I don't like elevators. They're a pain.
Yeah, it still could be more than ten thousand. I mean, when we were talking early on, it was like sixty, fifty to sixty thousand.
Maybe I was just using bargaining chips that they didn't know about, Commissioner.
Well, no, that was just the thing that you told me as far as the maintenance part.
Well, I'm putting a lot of stuff out there with them. We're in negotiations. They're playing their cards, and I'm trying to play all cards, and I think that we're going to reach some kind of solution on. going to reach some kind of solution on how these things are going to be handled. Will there be some local costs? Yes. We're not going to be able to have full absorption, what utilizes there, and in the future as volume increases, that may change. We're talking about probably about a nine to 10 million dollar project when we're finished here, recognizing we've already lost five and a half million dollars in matching federal dollars, but it's not just five and a half million, it's well over 10 million because now we're not getting allocated that money in the future. So we continue to see federal dollars leave this community in the form of paying taxes and it's not returning to this community for project money. We are a donor county, we are not a recipient county. We need to become a recipient county. We need other people's money. We got to stop giving them our money vis-à-vis the exchange of dollars at the federal level.
Yeah, but with that though, you do get the money for the projects, but then that money comes back where you have to pay the yearly maintenance or you're paying fees that come out of the general fund as well.
Well, it's no different with federal funds for roads Commissioner, no difference with repaving of state Route 57 which Elyria has to maintain, but they got federal dollars.
It's progress in improving our community, that's what our job is as government officials.
Difference though with the roads, you have actually more people using them and you have around 4,000 riders and we don't even know if that's single riders or if that's what, but, okay.
So we're going to approve an interim contract with Boeing and Associates Cleveland in the amount not to exceed $1,116,363 and not to exceed in reversal of expenses $43,233.05 for Phase 2 Lorraine County Amtrak platform project.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Jim, anything else?
Let me just check.
Double check.
Double check, we've got it all covered.
Yeah, this has been a grueling couple of weeks for everybody over here. I make sure there's nothing else in the folders. I think I covered most of it, I have the right authorities, you passed the resolution like you always do, so I think that we'll be able to function through the end of the year. Since this is our last meeting, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, whatever your beliefs, traditions, practices are, this time of year is always a pleasant time for everybody. Reach out to those that are in need, be generous with your love and your support and everybody be safe and we'll see you in the new year. That's the end of my report.
Mr. Ennis?
I have no report this morning.
I don't really have a report, I just wanted, like Mr. Cortez says, wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year and wish the best to Mr. Williams and his next chapter in his life, whatever that may be. Good luck to you sir. End of my report.
Busy week. Nowak met on Friday our Governance Board, the last one of the year, just going over some of the issues, again another presentation on Geoga Counties, asking about how they get out of Nowak, so we'll see how that goes next year. Also got the opportunity with Keith Bailey and Tiffany Barker and Mike Challander attended the Overland Refuge Center, the new hybrid garbage trucks, going to save them between the five trucks almost $100,000 a year in fuel return on investment three to four years. Our EPA was there as good partners this time, not just regulating us, telling us what we can't do, they were actually helping us advance a project. City of Overland's very thrilled with it, the student organization from Overland College did a great job, so nice project moving forward. Also attended the Man-to-Man Group Christmas Party, Ray Noble always invites me there, great group of guys. Also on Monday, Second Harvest did their hard hat toward their new facility, I was there to speak about the importance of supporting a group like Second Harvest and also talking about, we had Representative Jim Jordan was there also and he gave a few words and I sort of talked about the need, it's not just hungry children, hungry people, it's a jobs problem and with a new Congress coming in, a new state legislature, they got to worry about how we're going to produce the jobs so these people don't have to worry about having to go to the food bank all the time, actually speaking to the Director of the food bank, this is one business, I like to seek a lot of business. So hopefully they'll work on that. Also, if you haven't had an opportunity yet, I'd like to thank our County Engineers Office and InfraBreezy Construction, our subcontractors at Griswold Road, spoke to some of the business people on that road, no more flooding, the road looks absolutely beautiful from the hellhole it was and it looks like we're going to go forward on moving Larry Avenue from Griswold going north, so that'll make a nice corridor between those two communities. Again Merry Christmas, have a good year, see you in 15. Oh, we got one more, I'm sorry. Yeah, Don. Oh, you missed it in your report, you forgot, so yeah.
I would have had you.
You'd have had it, Tom could have done it, yeah.
Yeah, he was the last one in the bubble.
Thank you Commissioner Calhoun and Board, I'd like to take just a brief moment to introduce newest member to your Economic Development Team who will actually be the day-to-day lead on it. His name is Jerry Good and he comes with a wonderful pedigree, he's been with us now for about a week and a half and want to give him an opportunity to introduce himself to you, so as you see him throughout the community or in the building, that you know who he is and a little bit of what we have planned on going on. So with that, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to bring him on and Jerry?
Thank you Don, I'm excited to be here. Give you a little background on me, I spent 16 years in the private sector in operations of a small company, 18 employees, got into economic development doing a downtown project and attracting a bank into abandoned department store and thought this is kind of interesting, so ended up spending 10 and a half years in Allen County, Ohio in economic development. During that time I served as President of Ohio Development Association, due to that membership to 700 members. Then I was recruited under the Strickland Administration to be a Regional Economic Development Director, did that for four years, did over 115 projects in those four years during a very difficult time. And then moved down to Columbus and was asked under the current administration to run the Ohio Department of Development, did that for two and a half years while they stood up Jobs Ohio, responsible for loans, tax incentives, grants, workforce. And now I'm here and I'm excited to be here, Don's a great person to work with and I'm looking forward to working with the community.
Looking forward to having you here.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
You know, just as an aside, you know Jerry impressed us, we got benefit of a head hunting firm's work and other organizations' work, the top three candidates for the Team Lorraine County job, Jerry was in that top candidates, actually they took our Economic Development Director, so we took the top candidate from that search and I was glad Jerry wanted to come up. I was a little worried that we may not be as attractive, but...
Lorraine County's a lot nicer than Franklin County. We've got a lake.
Trust me, I only spent three and a half years in Franklin County, so.
So, you know, I want to tell you, I think we're getting a lot of talent, I'm glad you're here and with Dawn over at Team Lorraine County and Jerry here, we're starting, we've put together a really good powerful team again, there's been a lot of movement on that in the last year, so welcome, I think you've already relocated here.
I moved over the weekend, so I'm a resident of Lorraine County, moved in over the weekend.
All right, sounds great.
Glad to have that behind me.
All right, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, thank you. Look forward to working with you. Commissioner Williams?
Well, actually it's kind of emotional and being the last meeting and that, when I started here in 2011, a lot of people that put their support in me to come in and try to offer different viewpoints and I think I've done that during my four years. And I just want to thank the voters of Lorraine County that gave me that opportunity to do something that I wanted to do my entire life and that was to work in government and serve the people and be able to make, try to make a difference, so I thank you for that. At the same time, looking forward to coaching baseball games this summer and not having individuals talk to me on Thursday's games about what happened in Wednesday's meeting, so that's going to be nice and, you know, since the election, the phone doesn't ring as much and I'm able to actually get through and finish a movie with the kids, so I am grateful for that. But I want to thank everyone again for the opportunity, it's been a privilege and an honor and for those wondering what I'm going to do, well, it's open for me. I have been interviewing with companies locally, out of the state and one potentially even out of the country which would be a contract service for about four years. So while the future is uncertain, the one thing I do know is that I have my children, which I am truly grateful for, I have a loving God and with that, there's not too much more that man can ask for. So I just want to thank you and Happy Hanukkah to everyone who's celebrating Hanukkah this week and a Merry Christmas to everyone and let's hope that 2015 not only brings everyone here a blessed New Year, but let's hope that Lorraine County becomes truly great, which I know it has the capability of being, so thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Ennis, 20-year retirement proclamation of Lorraine Wilkins from JFS, retiring 1219, and a crawl 30-year employee auditor data department, retiring 1231. January 12th at 9:30 will be our Commissioner's Organizational Meeting, at 11 o'clock that day will be our Transportation Improvement District Meeting, January 20th at 10 will be our Stormwater District, January 21st at 9:30 we will have our Commissioner's Meeting and then the State of Ohio Mileage Reimbursement for 15 will be 52 cents for correspondence.
Move the reading be waived.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone looking to address the Board this morning as we close out 2014? Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the County Administrator.
Second?
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Happy holidays guys.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties, secure and safe Ohio RideShare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion, while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE, or register online at ohirideshare.com. Point, click, ride. Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you. A river runs through our land, but we don't often see this river, or understand how we affect it. It's a river with great power, power to change the face of where we live, our land, our economy, our health, and our children's future. We need to know this river, how our actions affect it, and how we can help protect it. Because this river is ours. This river is the Black River. The Black River is making a comeback. After years of devastating pollution, the changes we've made have made a difference. Now is the time, and we are the people, to make more changes, and to protect what's been gained for the entire Black River watershed. The Black River drew people here, and its life-giving water gave them a reason to stay. From early Indian tribes to the first white settlers, the Black River is also the reason we became a leader in agriculture and industry, and why our population and economy boomed with shipbuilding, steel, and automobile industries. Throughout much of the 1900s, the Black River was valued mainly for drainage and disposal, and its access to Lake Erie. But for those who grew up along the banks of the river, it had a different value, and holds many sweet memories.
I grew up on an old beach ridge in Lorraine County, on a tributary of the Black River, a very small tributary. And I spent all my time outdoors, playing in the water, watching the tadpoles, realizing that things live in the habitat of the stream.
Well, I grew up on West River Road, which West River, or Black River, of course, passes through. And I spent a lifetime, I guess you might say, on the Black River. When we were growing up, we had a dock there behind our house. We had rowboat, that type of thing. Built a lot of rafts on the Black River, too.
But memories of the Black River changed dramatically.
The river, when I was a kid, was someplace where you wouldn't even go around to play, and someplace you were told by your parents to keep away from because of the dirtiness of it and the pollution. I remember even fishing wasn't a good idea. I remember the pictures of the carp with cancer pulled out all over them, and the different fish with all deformed because of the different pollutions. So I remember as a kid, it was a pretty rough area.
The Black River was a rough area, a river with seriously deformed fish, with water so contaminated, it was determined unsafe for swimming, or wading, or fishing.
The Black River used to be known as the River of Fish Tumors. In 1965, one of the county commissioners called the Black River the main sewer line to Lake Erie. It was one of the 43 most polluted river systems in the Great Lakes. It had horrible industrial legacy problems up near Lorraine, and it always had problems with sediment, just because of the type of soils that the Black River is located on.
The Black River 20 years ago was as bad as anywhere in the nation. It was on the same scale as the Cuyahoga River, and the Buffalo River, and the Detroit River, which were really just about as bad as you can get. So it was one of the worst rivers in the country back then, especially as far as carcinogens, which is like...
Industrial pollution had taken a heavy toll on the river, and one sign that could not be ignored was the fish population. International fish expert Roger Toma has a long history of studying fish habitats, and many years of testing on the Black River.
When we first came to the Black River, the first monitoring of the Black River by the Ohio EPA was 1982. There are areas in the river where there were no fish living. We could catch no fish. That's pretty dramatic. That takes extreme environmental conditions to eliminate every single fish. 20 years ago, there were parts of the Black River that were an open cesspool, that were running rife with raw sewage, that were devoid of life except for the most tolerant organisms that eat sewage, such as an insect referred to as a bloodworm, bacteria, and fungus. 20 years ago, the Black River was like a witch's brew of environmental problems and environmental insults. It was, I would characterize it as, a dangerous river to be near.
Dangerous. That's the word used to describe a river that had once been rich in biodiversity, fish species, and animal life. It became a servant to industry, and was nearly killed for it. April 2004, the progress has been remarkable. It was a major triumph when the Ohio Department of Health's 21-year advisory against swimming or wading in the lower Black River was finally lifted. At the same time, the river's status in regard to fish tumors was officially upgraded, from impaired to in recovery. It was an event to celebrate, coming after years of change, including the closing of the U.S. Steel Coking Plant.
It's much better now, so much better. It's just almost unbelievable to those of us that were here early on. We had the coke plant closed down, which brought some improvement. And then they did a dredging in 1990 to take out the worst of the contaminated muds and sediment in the river.
To tell the story of the Black River's recovery, look back in time. You get a sense of how the damage started, and the changes that began to turn it all around. In the late 1800s and early 1900s, you see the U.S. Steel Plant and the American Shipbuilding Company begin to pour industrial waste into the river. You see the first sanitary sewers pumping directly into the river, causing an increase in typhoid. And for more than 70 years, you see little or no regulation of what was discharged into the Black River. When did change begin? After the Cuyahoga River caught fire and gained national attention. The first federal environmental regulation, the Clean Water Act, was enacted shortly after that. Then came the Ohio EPA doing extensive studies on the Black River. But even after the regulations, and dredging, and improved wastewater treatment, more needs to be done. Why? Because the problems are not just from pollutants being discharged into the river, the problems are throughout the land drained by the Black River, the area called the watershed. The Black River watershed includes the land drained by the East Branch, the West Branch, Plum Creek, French Creek, and the main stem of the river, where it empties into Lake Erie. To make real improvements, we needed to deal with the entire watershed on a grassroots level, to tell the people about what was happening, and to make changes. And that's exactly what the Black River Remedial Action Plan was designed to do.
They couldn't just fix all the pipes, all the effluent coming from pipes. There had to be a change of mindset within the entire watershed. So they developed the remedial action plans to try to get to the local level, to try to get to individuals' homes and municipalities, to try to get them to take charge, to take control of how their watershed is developed, and what their watershed will look like in the next 10, 15, 20 years.
The Remedial Action Plan, known as RAP, has been a great success in teaching and involving the people of the watershed.
It really offended me to find out that there was supposedly a meeting about the river, and they claimed that no one showed up. And the plane dealer was saying that everyone out in the Black River area was apathetic. And it's like, well, wait a minute. It must have been one of those public meetings that you put in the fine print of the paper. If people really knew about the condition of the Black River, they would really turn out and support it. And that's what we found. We really found a lot of support. People just did not know what was going on with the river.
So what was going on? The Black River was one of four Ohio rivers designated as an official "area of concern." But citizens on the RAP Committee determined that the entire watershed should be designated an area of concern. Why? Well, because we've had serious impairments to the beneficial uses that a river should provide, with fish that are not safe to eat, and public beaches not safe for swimming, or even wading. It's true, we've made remarkable progress, but we've also uncovered new problems.
With the swimming advisory that had been lifted, and the incidence of deformities in fish decreasing, I think those have really been good goals for the Black River, and ones to really be celebrated. But I think with that, it's learning that there are other issues out there, because those were so highlighted for such a long time, that now it's really stepping up and getting excited and motivated about fixing some of the other problems that were a little bit hidden.
The hidden problems are the ones that aren't fixed by regulating or closing industries. They're called non-point sources of pollution.
I think the main problem is the non-point source issue. And when we say non-point source pollution, we mean those types of pollution that are not associated with a pipe coming out of a factory, or a wastewater treatment plant. But actually, the kind of runoff that comes off of streets, it comes off of your yard, it comes off of an agricultural setting, if you will, or a feedlot. And those kinds of quick runoffs can have a great deal of impact on the watershed and the river, particularly as it relates to the fish, the nutrients, and of course, the habitat where the fish and the microorganisms live.
Simply put, if you can point to where the pollution is coming from, that would be a point source. Cleaning up point source problems are easy, because you can locate them. Cleaning up non-point source problems are more difficult, because it is so diverse, it is so watershed-wide.
Besides adding pollutants to the water, we're literally losing our land. The soil in our watershed is being washed away. That's why you often see the river looking muddy and brown. In areas of the upper Black River watershed, more than 20% of our land is eroding, at a rate of at least five tons per acre every year. The proof is in the picture. This is the mouth of the Black River before a rain, and this is the same place after a rain. What you see is a plume of sediment emptying into Lake Erie. What you see is the soil we're losing, over 17,000 acres eroding at excessive levels, with more than 80% of it cropland. To fix the problems in the Black River watershed, we need to understand how each of us may be causing the erosion and non-point pollution. First, take this little quiz. What percentage of the land in our Black River watershed is used for industrial purposes? Would you guess 25%, 15%, 10, or 1? How about agricultural? Maybe 20 or 30%? Or is it 40 or 50%? The truth is, only 1% of our watershed is truly industrial. Over half, 51%, is used for agriculture. Though it may be changing, our land use is still clearly dominated by farms. What about the rest of our land? 38% is rural residential, 7% is urban residential, and 3% is used for commercial purposes. The more we understand how we impact the river and the land, the better we can address non-point pollution problems. We are the people of the Black River watershed. We are farmers, homeowners, developers, public officials, and students. We are the ones who can make a difference. Farms dominate much of the landscape in our area, and how we practice farming in the watershed has a great impact. When farmers protect fields and riverbanks from erosion, and use the most efficient means of fertilizer application, it keeps soil and fertilizer from overloading the river.
From a selfish point of view, it's important, because the soil we lose is the topsoil, which contains more of the nutrients than the subsoil does. And so that every bit of topsoil that we can save is something that we don't have to replace by way of added fertilizer and so forth. But secondly, I think that it is just a good practice on the part of farmers to try to keep the streams and small rivers and so forth as clean as possible, because we don't want any more direct regulation than is necessary. The more we do voluntarily, the less likely we are to be forced to do it by government regulation. And farmers are fairly independent cusses. We like to whine and complain, but we don't want to be told how to work things.
When farmers work things themselves, the improvements can really make a difference.
I'd say in the last 20 years, agriculture has really addressed some of the problems that we had from years ago, as far as fertilizer runoff, manure runoff. Of course, in Lorraine County now, we don't have a lot of livestock operations left. So the manure runoff, I think, has probably kind of taken care of itself because of the lack of the dairy farms and beef farms. Of course, the government has promoted filter strips along the edges of a lot of the cricks and stuff, and I think that's helped as far as runoff goes for fertilizer.
Some farmers have used measures to keep the soil on the ground in their own fields.
Well, I think that basically, there are two practices. One is that we have installed grassed waterways in a number of our fields where the slope is sufficient that if we were to till through those areas, we would experience some erosion. More importantly, the other practice is that we have gone to essentially 100% no-till, which means that we neither mow, board, plow, nor chisel plow any of our land. And it is through the use of a no-till drill for small seeds, and a no-till corn planer, that we're able to do this. And by not disturbing the soil, we tend to be able to keep it in place, rather than having it erode.
One of the leading edges, I think, is this GPS technology that John Deere's been promoting for the last several years. The farmers are mapping all of their crops, so they know where to put on more or less fertilizer. In other words, it's not just a blanket where we're going to put on X amount of pounds of fertilizer in a given area, and it's going to help some of the poorest areas, and then where the better land is, where you don't need that much fertilizer, GPS gives them the opportunity to cut back there, so we don't have this excess amount of fertilizers and pesticides that are going into the streams.
Farmers, homeowners, and developers along the Black River can also use a simple and natural technique to reduce erosion, flooding, and chemical runoff. It's called a riparian border. It's a buffer strip of plants right along the water's edge, such as trees, shrubs, and some native plants and grasses. A riparian border can make a huge difference in holding the soil in place, and that soil also helps clean the water by filtering out pollutants in runoff water.
One of the important things in protecting the Black River and other water systems is having a healthy riparian corridor. One of the main things about a riparian corridor would be woody vegetation, because they put down roots, which as you can see, are pretty extensive. They hold the stream banks in place. These particular roots here have held this stream bank in place long enough for this large tree to grow here. Now probably some of the earlier floods that we have had have washed away some of the soil away from these roots, but it is still continuing to hold this stream bank in place, where without this tree, this whole stream bank would probably be eroded away and add to the sediment flows of the river. As we increase the impervious surfaces along the river, there are more and more water getting to the river faster. It's whisked off of our streets, and our parking lots, and our roadways, so the river actually rises and falls more quickly and with greater frequency than it used to. What used to be a 100-year flood may now come at 75 years, or at worst, maybe even 50 years. We're seeing flooding at a more rapid pace. Can you imagine this whole river, which I am probably six feet above the river surface right now, rising up so that this rag, which is probably at least 10 feet above the river surface right now, floating along the river and getting snagged by this branch? This entire river raised up 10 feet, and then fell back down. This is happening more and more frequently, because we have more and more impervious surface, and more and more water is getting to the river system, instead of just soaking into the soil and down into groundwater.
The loss of farmland due to development is the reason we have more streets, parking lots, and rooftops. More and more water flows into the river, giving it the power to cut right through turns in a bank. When that happens, water levels rise too high, and flooding occurs. This is one example of a serious cut. On the west branch of the Black River at Hughes Road, the river... On the west branch of the Black River at Hughes Road, the river is actually trying to change course due to the increased flow of runoff water. When the river winds, this bridge will be lost, and tons of valuable topsoil will be washed downriver. You can see the effects here, too, on the east branch of the river in Grafton. The water is muddy brown from too much sediment. The banks are cut with trees starting to fall, and the stream bottom is dug down to the bedrock, leaving no place for bugs and crayfish to live. That means no food for fish. So what can farmers do to reduce the amount of soil and pesticides entering the river? Well, they can plant riparian borders along creeks and the river, use methods of farming that reduce the loss of soil, and use precision methods of applying fertilizer and pesticide. We've all seen it. Land is being developed at a rapid pace in our watershed. So developers also play a key role in protecting our water quality and our land. More and more of our land is being covered by houses, streets, and parking lots. With less soil to absorb the rainwater, too much water is rushing into the Black River after a rain. That water is carrying pollutants right into the river because there's not enough open land and plant life to act as a sponge and absorb the water. Besides pollution, the river becomes overloaded with sediment. And as a result, we see floods occurring more often with water moving at a much greater force.
I think we just need to look at places that have already been developed, such as the Cuyahoga River, places like Eastlake that receive waters that have already been developed upstream, and now they're dealing with flooding, they're dealing with siltation and so on. This is what could happen to other rivers that are perhaps less developed right now if we don't take some action and make sure that the kind of development we're doing is sound.
So what kind of development is sound? Well, the ideal answer is simple. We maintain and develop the cities and townships that already exist. But when we do allow new developments in rural areas, what should they be like? Some answers come from the Countryside Program, a nonprofit group helping northeast Ohio communities protect natural resources.
What we're trying to do is just help the developer understand what options may be available that will increase the environmental value of the development project. Usually, that means finding ways to set aside open space in the right places to reduce the impact of that development project on the environment. So we're looking for ways to reduce impervious surface on the property, to increase the filtering and management of stormwater, to preserve habitat, and so on.
One development that's done all those things is Avon Berry Lakes in Avon, developed by Joe Scaletta.
I am a home builder and land developer, and I develop conservation developments, not too typical, what I call cookie cutter subdivision, where you're building on every inch of land.
Using a concept called clustering, Avon Berry homes are built closer together on smaller lots. Now, that means less pavement, allowing for nearly half of the development to be open space. Stormwater is retained in natural ponds, where it's filtered through the soil and then flows slowly to the river. A 23-acre environmental preserve was left in place. It's not only a beautiful place for residents here with walking trails, bridges, and wildlife, but the trees on the land help prevent flooding.
And I think having that area of runoff where we can still encourage the wetlands and protect the wetlands and put Mother Nature's floodplains to use as it was originally intended, flooding areas, temporary holding basins, will all benefit all of us. And conservation development is a good way to protect all of our natural resources, certainly Black River.
The homebuyers are more sophisticated today, and they're also concerned about the environment when they're building a new home. The problem is our, the codes of most cities are outdated, antiquated. They have large lots, large streets, and don't take any consideration of the aspects of the land. They just say, "We want 150 by 150-foot lot, we want 200 feet frontage," whatever it is. And by doing that, you typically, a developer has to come in and clearcut the entire site.
We need to change the way we think of developments, and for certain, the public needs to demand land use codes that protect the environment and give us a better quality of life in our neighborhoods.
There's a drawbridge mentality. The last person in the township wants the drawbridge to be, come up. That's the last, we're the last ones, you know? And we, and by law, we cannot say, "No more development here." All we can do is control it.
Lorraine County is on the verge of a lot of development coming from the west, west from Cleveland. And I think we have the opportunity now to establish those land use practices that we're not going to see just subdivision after subdivision without green space, without water quality protection, and riparian zone protection. If we can do that now, I think we're going to really help the river in the next 20 years.
I think the problem with most homeowners is they really don't understand that what they do has an impact. I think they see one, one small or large property and feel they're just a small part of the big puzzle, and what they do really makes no difference. And I think somehow they need, I mean, we all need to understand more as individuals what impact we really do have.
How do homeowners impact soil erosion and water quality? With our landscaping practices, septic systems, and chemicals used on lawns and flower beds.
If one person dumps a little fertilizer, a little chemical on his lawn, it's probably not a big deal to the, you know, to the water that comes out at the mouth of the Black River. But if 1,000 or 1,500 or all the other people on the same watershed do the same thing, it's a mammoth difference.
Home sewage treatment can also make a mammoth difference. In rural areas without sanitary sewer systems, each home treats sewage individually with underground septic tanks. These tanks were often installed as long ago as the 1930s and 40s. Even 20-year-old systems are overloaded with today's modern appliances like dishwashers. Many of our septic systems are now outdated and usually not maintained by homeowners.
They need to be pumped out periodically. There are motors in them, moving parts, aerators. Those need to be maintained, run properly, so that the water coming out on the, on the clean side is in fact clean.
In many cases, that water coming out of the older septic systems is not clean, and that means human waste is going directly from our septic systems into the river.
The new homeowners, I don't think, impacted very much because all the sewage systems are on lot. In the old homes, where the sewage systems aren't maintained properly, some of them have direct outlets to the river or to creeks and streams that go to the river, and they would cause a lot of untreated sewage or effluent to go there.
The general thought is, if my toilet flushes, then my system's working. But what is happening is the wastewater is going down our drains from our home into the tank, and the tank is discharging to a pipe, and the pipe is going to a stream that goes to the Black River that goes to Lake Erie, and it's basically a direct shot.
Septic systems aren't a priority to the homeowner until they back up or fail. Failing means that somewhere in your yard, you've got sewage water, effluent bubbling out, and then they panic. Sometimes homeowners try to fix it themselves by taking a direct line to the creek or river. And of course, that would, that's terrible, but there's just a lack of education, a lack of desire to know about it and do anything with it until it's a problem. And as long as there's not a density of them and they're spread out, it's not as bad. But you get into a highly developed area where the houses are close together, it would be much worse. Now, everything is concentrated on lot. Your sewage system is treated on lot, and it is disposed on lot, where it actually soaks into the ground by way of an ad grade system or a Wisconsin mound, which the water, the sewage is pumped up into a large amount of sand, and it filters down through it. So it never, never leaves your lot, and that way, it doesn't impact the river at all.
What's the solution for homeowners with old sewage treatment systems? They should maintain or upgrade what they have, and where it's possible, install sanitary sewers. Landscaping is another way homeowners impact our watershed. Just like farmers, homeowners need to plant riparian borders to hold soil in place along the edge of ponds, creeks, and the river itself. Planting grass right up to the edge of the water does not hold the soil in place. The roots are too shallow. And if nothing holds the soil in place, especially after a rain, the riverbank gets washed away. Besides erosion of the land and loss of soil, it also causes overload of sediment in the river. Nooks and crannies on the river bottom become blanketed with silt, and this literally suffocates the bugs that fish eat and can clog fish gills. So what can homeowners do? Well, these are simple rules for landscaping to protect our watershed. Plant trees and shrubs along the water's edge, not grass. Don't mow up to the riverbank. And don't dump grass clippings in the river. Some homeowners have even left natural areas on their property. Dane Adams wanted to attract birds and wildlife, but there's another benefit we can all share.
And so as water runoff in that area filters through the wetland and then drains out, the plants and the microhabitat there tend to filter that water and make it cleaner going into the river.
Working together, we can improve and protect our watershed. People from the townships and the cities, environmental groups, farmers, and homeowners are getting together to talk about the problems and share solutions on an advisory committee.
It's, it's great to bring all of these players together at the table, which doesn't seem to happen a lot, that you get township trustees along with city people, along with concerned citizens, so you kind of run the gamut with concerns that are out there. And, you know, we don't want to be duplicating efforts.
The word is getting out that improving and protecting the Black River watershed demands voluntary effort, and in some cases, new regulations, such as how we handle stormwater in our communities.
The things that are important to us is certainly stormwater management, proper control and method of that. What takes place in the extreme southern part of Lorraine County, a higher elevation, all of that stormwater flows down to places like Amherst and Lorraine, and their development, if not handled properly in terms of the additional stormwater runoff, will cause flooding downstream towards the north here.
Too often in the past, one city would focus on their needs, and, for example, stormwater. And they thought the solution to the stormwater was to get the water away as soon as possible, as quickly as possible. When you do that, all you do is create headaches for the person downstream. You destroy habitat, and you just transfer your problems to the, to the community next door, and you're not being a good neighbor. So I think there needs to be a way where communities can communicate, can work together on stormwater problems, so they're not creating headaches for one another and costly headaches, really, to save money overall.
In planning for new developments within municipalities and city, the city officials must consider how much of that land is going to be covered by impervious surfaces. Impervious surfaces will not allow water to transfer down into the soil and be naturally cleansed.
City and township officials can also help bring about something new to many of us: recreational use of the Black River.
The amount of wood ducks and things that nest along it, and like I say, the raccoons, herons, the deer frequent it, cross it, it's beautiful, but as far as water sports or fishing, it's not used like rivers in other states or different places. Most people think the Black River is just a drainage, and it's, it's not.
In the next 20 years, I think you're going to have a lot more recreational use of the Black River and Lake Erie. Hopefully, we will start having open space, public, accessible locations, so that public can come and look like we are here today at this beautiful scenery, and to really enjoy the benefits of places like the Black River.
The future of the Black River watershed is in the hands of the young. Students need to understand the river and have the joy of going right to the water.
This has been the first year that I've been teaching that the warning has been lifted, and it was okay, you know, to get into it. We've done the waiters, et cetera, but a lot of them just like to just get in it, and that's the fun of it, you know, like really exploring it and looking around and seeing what they can see. Well, one of the first things I want them to understand is the concept of watershed and how, where they live in respect to that, that they are in the Black River watershed, et cetera. Elyria High School actually borders the river. We can see the river from our parking lot. And with some groups, like environmental groups, et cetera, we've gone down and we've seen like some of the activity, evidence of the activity. We've done cleanups, we've done water quality studies down at the river.
Some of us got waiters, some of us just went in the water. And Ms. Wiki's actually a really good teacher, because she, she would sit there, she'd just point out all this stuff to us. As a teenager, we always go up in the rocks, just hiking, everything. We'd go behind the falls and all that. But in ecology, we did learn a lot. I learned, like, people digging up dirt, it'll cause silt in the river, and then the fish will breathe it in, and that's a really big problem, especially with the Black River. The fish will breathe it in, and then they'll just die.
I think through the class, I actually learned more than I ever knew before, because I always have been like interested in like being involved with like the environment, but I didn't really know a whole lot about it.
And I think it's cool, because I think, especially for high school students, if you visibly learn, you know what I mean, like visually, it's, I think you soak it in better, you know what I mean? Like, you can be talking about it in the classroom, taking notes about it, but then when, when you come down here and she's sitting there and explaining things, like even the history.
Since you live here, you don't really think about it like as, it makes a difference if you keep around here clean, too, you know? But then afterwards, I thought about that, like, I'm like, when I go down here now, I like, I look at the trash and stuff, and I think about that, kind of thing, and we're keeping it clean around here.
I think if you learn more about it and you realize what it's doing to the river, then obviously, you're going to stop. Like us, how much we learn, it makes you think twice about, like you said, just throwing something on the ground or just your everyday lifestyle. It really does make you change, makes you think.
There is a lot of gloom and doom environmental studies because humans have impacted the planet so greatly. But on the other hand, when they can see studies and they can actually, you know, see data about water quality, that things have changed. Lake Erie itself has changed tremendously in my lifetime. Then it gives them a reason to modify practices or to, you know, just live like good stewards of the earth, because it can make a difference, and it does.
We are making a difference. After improvements to Elyria's wastewater collection system and upgrades at the Grafton Wastewater Treatment Plant, the U.S. EPA determined that organisms living at the bottom of the east branch of the Black River have fully recovered. We were the first remedial action plan in Ohio to show significant improvement, and now we're the first RAP on the U.S. side of the Great Lakes to completely restore an impairment in a portion of the watershed.
This shows the potential that the east branch can achieve. If the bottom-dwelling creatures, if the first rung on the food ladder can improve to such an extent that they're exceptional, they're considered exceptional, it shows the potential for the east branch to achieve great things, even in the fish habitat and other wildlife habitat around the sub watershed.
The improvements are incredible, but we don't want to stop there. We want to keep going. But I don't think we're at that step yet where everybody realizes that their farm or their septic tank could be causing the river down here in Lorraine to be a little more cloudy than, than the nice blue tones that we like to see here.
We must change our mindset, we must live responsibly, we must leave riparian corridors, little buffer systems along the watersheds, we must try to maintain our septic tanks, we must develop neighborhoods responsibly.
I think if people have personal contact, whether it's recreational or any other interactions with the river, that they have, definitely have a much closer connection and come to realize the impact of their actions on the watershed. Definitely, the out-of-sight, out-of-mind thing has, has got to go by the wayside. People really need to be reconnected and get it that they are a part of this whole picture.
We're all in this together, the people of the Black River watershed. This is our river. This is our responsibility.
We load up an 18-foot trailer. Rugs, cables, audio/video equipment, sound systems, all the lighting. Then they have the task of hauling everything out of the trailer and taking it into the gymnasium or lunchroom or whatever large multipurpose room they have for us. We're generally there for the whole day. If we're going to be back at the school the next day, we can leave our equipment still set up. If we're going to be at a different school the next day, then we have the job of removing it from the multipurpose room and taking it back to the trailer, loading up the trailer, and locking it up and calling it quits for the day. It started in January 2007 with CERTS, which is Safe Routes to School. And Ken had an idea, developed the Safety Star program. It has escalated to the point where, as of this year's date, we have seen 38,000 students in Lorraine County.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to four, teaching them to walk the street safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to four. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the street safely. And we're quite happy to announce.
We bring safety to the school. We're self-contained. We have all the mock simulations of scenarios, such as busy intersections. We have all the roads, movie screens, our audio/video system, streets, sidewalks, grass, working traffic signals, working railroad signals. And we bring that all to the school so the student does not have to leave. To make sure that all the lights, bulbs are working. And if all the audio/video equipment is up and running, we then put on the program. We put together a dynamite program with a lot of positivity. We're very animated. The students enjoy it while they're learning an important rule about safety. When we ask questions, we ask for group participation. It's never just one student answering the question. It's everybody answering the question together.
Are you ready? Yeah!
Teachers included. We make learning fun for everybody. We show two short films. One is Willie the Whistle. And Willie the Whistle teaches kids in a simple format, the correct way to walk with parents, answer on calls, or any other family members that are responsible adults, to cross streets where there are no stop signs or where it's just stop signs and no traffic lights, and to cross streets where there are parked cars, what to look for, when to cross, when there are cars parked along the sides of the street. And again, it's all basically looking left, right, and left. When the short film is over, we generally teach from what the kids just watched. And that's, those are the scenarios then we go over with our mock setup. We go over basically what the video has just gone over. And then we let the kids apply what they just learned to doing it in real life, to our mock simulation that we have in the room that we are performing in. Everybody leaves at the end of our program with a great feeling, knowing that all they have to do is look left, right, and left again, and they're going to be smiling for a good, long time. I would highly recommend this program to all administrative principals in every school system. And it's a very good program. I believe in it 100%. I've had students see me at the mall or see me at a carnival or a festival and come up and say, "I remember you. You're the safety guy. You're Mr. Neal." And the first question I ask them, "What are the three ways you look before you cross the street?" This could be the year after we saw them, and they always say, "Left, right, and left again," and they say it with a smile. So I know our program works.
Because you did a good job today, at the end of the day, you're going to get to go home with the yellow Safety Star bag, okay?
Ah, the fun part. The students get to take home their surprise at the end of the day, which is the yellow Safety Star bag. And inside that bag are some neat things about pedestrian safety. We have the pedestrian safety flashcards. They also will get the Safety Star Certificate of Participation, which has their school name on it and the date. And we like to let the kids know that that's something that they can take home and hang on their refrigerator, they can hang on their bedroom door, or they can have their parents put it in a scrapbook for them. Their parents will receive some information, such as the Top 10 Safety Tips for Adults, because even as adults, we need to refresh our memories on safety. They, as students, will receive the Top 10 Safety Star Tips for Students. They will also receive a Safety Star Maze for those that are a little bit more adventurous and like a challenge. We also offer a safety coloring sheet. And there are some other things in the bag, but the things the kids like the most is the Safety Star pencil. And that's a pencil that changes colors when you touch it. And with that pencil comes the Safety Star Eraser, which is a yellow eraser shaped like a star, and it says "Safety Star" on it.
Yeah!
We need 40-foot by 40-foot area, electrical accessibility, and a way to turn off and on the main lights of the room for our movies that we show. The smallest class we've done is 15 students. The largest class is 60. So usually, the classes range from 23 to 25 students per class. There are occasions where the school has to schedule two classes at a time. We're very flexible. We do have the ability to fit into smaller rooms, so we pretty much will accommodate to what they can offer. I would highly recommend this program to all principals in every school system. At the end of the day, I feel very, very good. I'm excited that I know that kids are going to practice what they've learned, and I can go home and sleep good at night, knowing that those children are going to get to school safely, they're going to get home safely, they're going to be smiling, and their parents are going to be smiling because everybody is safe.